Jill Smith.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started with our FY26 budget deliberations. Today's date is July 23, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Everline Duncan and Matarri. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. Before we get started with our first business item, I'd just like to have Commissioner Duncan introduce and welcome a new member of the county today.
Will Hunter started as our new Adult Misdominer Probation Director, and he is in the audience today. So I just figured I'd take, I'm sorry, Will, I know I didn't, I kind of sprung this on you. But yeah, just wanted people to start to get familiar with your face and name, and welcome to Cootney County.
Yep. On behalf of the board, welcome. So with that said, let's go into our one and only business item, FY26 Final Budget Deliberations. It's an action item, and you want to start, Jennifer Locke, our clerk, or Brandy Falcon?
Okay, I guess I'll go. Brandy Falcon for the record. So I'm going to start off with the preliminary summary, which you have printed in front of you. And so currently, with no COLA, we are at a $678,000 surplus at a 3% tax increase and a $58,000 surplus at a 2% tax increase. This does not include any revenues that have been budgeted for the City of Hayden, and this does include increasing employee health premiums by certain percentages, which I'll go over next. So that is already baked in here. And then if we go to the 1% COLA scenario, we are only $14,000 deficit at a 3% tax increase. So obviously, I'm still waiting to hear back from the City of Hayden on what they're going to propose back to the county. But we do have statutory deadlines, and so I'm presenting the budget as balanced on July 31st to the Commissioners with or without Hayden's revenue. So right now, I'm proceeding as if they don't exist in our budget, and if we hear back from them before then, all the better, and they get included. But I just can't hold up our process waiting for them. And so on the plus side, the county can afford to do a 1% COLA without the City of Hayden's revenues, most likely. We'd only have to cut $14,000, which is very doable. And so I think, even though we are playing kind of a waiting game right now, I think we're still in a really good position.
Okay. So is the, if Hayden says yes, we would like to, and they pick a scenario, does this have the lieutenant in? So essentially, okay.
So if Hayden decides to pay us for the cost of that lieutenant included in the revenues, we would have to add the lieutenant back in and the lieutenant's car, assuming we were to do a new FTE for the lieutenant and not reassign an existing lieutenant. So, any questions on that?
Any questions?
Nope.
No? No.
Yep. So now I'm going to go into the health insurance spreadsheet. And so I emailed this to the Commissioners already. The one that I emailed had a 6% rate for the employee only, and so I'll explain real quickly how this works. So when the county has to pay for health insurance, there's a total rate per month that gets charged based on what tier of insurance the employee is on. So if it's employee only, employee spouse, employee child one, employee child two or more, and then this is an entire family, employee spouse, child one, employee spouse, child two or more. And so there's a total rate that gets paid per month to regents, and we have to split that monthly rate between what the county pays and what the employee pays out of their paycheck. And so the Commissioners, you know, in speaking with a couple of them offline, had come up with the concept of choosing a flat percentage of the total rate for each of these tiers that the employee would pay, and then kind of sticking with that percentage year in and year out. And so currently, for example, the employee pays 6.26% of that monthly rate, and the county is paying, you know, 93, 94% of the monthly rate for that tier. And so if we were to make no changes to all of these employee tiers, then actually, all their percentages would go down from where they currently are because the county is picking up the entire increase to the monthly rate. So I went through and said, okay, to adjust for next year, we'll set the employee at a flat 6% of total monthly rate. We'll set the employee spouse at 15%, and that's just going based off of just pretty close to what the percentages were last year. If we do the employee only at 6%, it's only a $1 a month increase. So I went ahead and I actually did that at 7.5% to bring it just a little bit more in line with the increases for the other tiers. So the board, we can, we can play with these percentages right here in terms of the percentage of total monthly rate that you're comfortable with each tier of the health plan paying. And then this is the increase per month to the employee for each of those levels. So the highest right now is a $21 a month increase, and that is for the employee spouse and one child. And that's what I have baked into the budget right now, is these percentages, the savings to the county. And that also includes increasing the nicotine from $70 to $80 a month. So I wanted to know the board's thoughts on that methodology. I also calculated just a straight 5% increase across the board, because that was also asked, but that's less savings to the county. It's only $77,000 as opposed to $126,000. So wanted to know the board's thoughts on that.
So that number, the 126, is it?
Yep.
Is baked in already?
Yes, it is.
I like the idea of going with a percentage that does not change year over year. And then that way, if the county doesn't have an increase, employees don't have an increase, and it's kind of, I don't want to say just fair, but kind of is.
More standardized.
Yeah, yeah, it's not so arbitrary, like, we're going to raise it this much this year and then so much more next year.
Thoughts, Commissioner Erbelin?
Sounds good to me.
There you go.
Okay, so we'll stick with those rates that I've calculated then.
How do you feel about that?
I believe it should be a percentage. You know, our health insurance went up how much? Almost a million?
Almost a million.
What percentage increase was that?
Oh, for the entire health plan? I don't know off the top of my head. I'm sorry. I want to say between like 5 and 8%. I'd have to go back and look. Alliant does their percentage increase primarily just based on the pieces of the health plan that they see. But there are other pieces of our health plan that they aren't necessarily involved with, such as the utilities and maintenance we pay for the PMR clinic. There's an EAP program we pay for our sworn officers that Alliant doesn't have in their portfolio. And so my total health plan increase is always a little different than theirs based on claims.
Understood. But it's a very expensive benefit.
Yes, it is, extremely. All right. And then I wanted to also, today I was hoping to get the board's direction on the levying for judgments. So that's at the bottom of the preliminary summary. It's the $299,330. So that's the amount that Cootney County is able to levy in FY26 to make ourselves whole on property tax that we lost in previous years due to lawsuit judgments at the state level, where us and all taxing districts in Cootney County had to lose out on tax dollars to make these private corporations whole because they won lawsuits at the state level on their valuations, I believe. So is the board wanting to levy for this judgment amount or not?
Thoughts?
It's nominal, and we would have been charging it all along had those things not happened. So I don't know if we're at 96,000 parcels or 100,000 parcels now, but it's between $2 and $3. So somewhere around $3 per parcel.
Commissioner Erbelin?
I like the 1%.
Well, no, we're just talking about this down here. Can the board, are you good with the board recovering this money that was actually, would have been paid but just wasn't collected?
And just for clarification, this is, this doesn't affect our tax base whether we do levy this or not. It simply is essentially reimbursing us for funds we lost out on the previous year.
But these numbers are not included in your bottom line numbers at this point?
Correct. It doesn't get included in the budget. It just essentially is a reimbursement to the county outside of the budget.
Okay. Are you good with that?
I think so.
Okay.
Right. So we'll proceed. When I publish the budget, I'll include that. And then I wanted to get, if this is too early for the board to make any decisions, that's fine. But I wanted to see if the board has any thoughts yet on where you'd like to go with a COLA percentage and with a tax increase percentage. I know that that does kind of depend on what we end up hearing back from Hayden, but is there any direction at this point from the board?
Thoughts?
I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Well, part of sitting here is you get to hear everyone else's thoughts first. So, you know, I know that we've talked about going up to 2%. Commissioner Erbelin has mentioned that. And I think it really does come down to what the city does. And whatever they end up doing, I'm fine with. We'll just make our decision based upon that.
Okay. All right. And then unless there's any, I'm sure if the Commissioners have specific things they want to bring up today, feel free to interrupt me. We can go through those. I'm going to jump to the personnel summary quickly. I wanted to go back to the prosecutor's requests. At our last meeting, the board said they would talk offline with the prosecutor about these requests. And so I wanted to know if there's any further update from the board on what they want to do with these. It's lines 73A through 75A on the personnel summary. So the last meeting, we had talked about if there were potential issues about not giving the attorneys additional steps in addition to the regrades. And that was kind of something that I think was going to be discussed between the prosecutor and the board offline.
I think we're not going to do the steps. That's the way I understand it.
So that's just.
The additional steps.
Right. So it looks like it's three total additional steps.
If I may, Stan Mortensen for the record. As I mentioned at the last meeting, what I was attempting to do with the grade and steps is consistent with policy and with what I've been doing. However, I've had a chance to reevaluate. I do think I'll be able to avoid the labor issues. And after seeing these figures today, I would agree to just the regrade and steps if it's going to help the county get cost of living raises.
Perfect. Okay. So I'll go ahead and make those changes to only budget for the regrades and not the additional steps.
Yes.
And then the only other ones I wanted to go back to was the two sheriff's deputies up at the top, line 27 and 28A. Previously, the board had agreed to approve the positions but freeze them. And so I know there was some discussion offline about, you know, why are we not doing that with other elected officials' requests for FTEs? Why wouldn't we just approve all of them and freeze them? And so I wanted to bring that back for discussion.
Yeah.
The Commissioners.
For me, I think it's a little different situation that, in my mind, the board, when presented with SRO and funding, is not taking from patrol. It should be adding another position. And that didn't happen twice with KC SO. I still, unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to get with Marcia to find out, you know, what she found out. I did find out some things, but I'm still trying to get to the bottom of why that happened and how it won't happen again.
See, this to me is just another case of the board being presented with trees and not knowing what the forest is going to look like. We're always asked to make one little decision on this, not realizing that it's going to have this ripple effect fiscally. And we need to start looking at this from a holistic perspective. I understand that there is a need for staffing. But the problem is, is that, Commissioner Duncan, this is exactly how you grow government. This is exactly how we do it, one little piece at a time. You know, oh, let's, you know, get this SRO in there, and let's get that person so that they can help out at the schools, even though that's its own taxing district. They'll pay some contribution, which I understand. And then we're presented with, now we have to expand government and add more overhead, even though we're not getting fully reimbursed for the overhead that we're providing. And, you know, we've had this happen before where we put money once in the budget. The position was never created, and then low and behold, we're presented to, you know, the board is presented with, well, you put it in the budget, so therefore you have already approved it. So if we put this in here and we add these positions, it'll come back to us and say, well, you've already approved this.
Drew that.
You know, and that's the problem I have a little bit with it. I have no problem adding more staff if we need it. Let's make the case for that, and then we can add that. Because once we add this staff, that increases our overhead year over year over year. The COLAs, the steps, they all increase the overhead significantly. And quite frankly, we're at a point right now where I believe that we're okay. But if we don't pay close attention to what we're doing, with the staffing especially, because we give out these COLAs and we give out these steps, we're going to find ourselves in a real pinch. And I'd like to avoid that as a Commissioner. But it's up to this board if they want to do these things. But we will have to deal with that.
Are you suggesting that you cut those positions and do not approve them as frozen?
Well, I'm, well, first of all, they're being added, so we're not cutting anything. We're just deciding whether or not to add them. They're not here, they don't exist right now. These were being asked for this fiscal year.
Yes.
So they don't exist. We're not cutting anything.
You're cutting the request.
Well, we're just not, we're not honoring the request.
However you want to say it, would you like them not approved as frozen and them to go away?
They're not going to be in the budget anyhow. So when the day comes to come before and expand patrol, let's look at this holistically, and I probably will be for it. But I'd like to understand what we're getting by adding these people, what we lost by adding the SROs. And then where do we want to be? How many, why two? Why not four? Why not six?
Two, they were replacing the SROs.
And what service levels were we getting before the SROs?
I would like to know all those answers.
Okay, so then we're in agreement. We should know these things before we start expanding government.
Yeah, I just asked you if you wanted to reduce that request.
And I said, I do not, I prefer it not be on the FY26. And that when the time comes to expand patrol, that the sheriff's office will give us a good presentation, show us how crime has been changing in the county, what service levels are, and then we can decide, hey, maybe two is not enough. Maybe we should have four. And that depends, too, on whether or not we're getting fully reimbursed with the Hayden contract, which we haven't been. It's been gobbling up some money. If you'd like to speak.
Law enforcement is not a spreadsheet. It would be nice if it was. But I cannot tell you how many times that a SRO may have saved a life. But I can tell you, I did go to a funeral of a 14-year-old girl three weeks ago. But I can't tell you what the statistics are of how many times that an SRO was contacted that may have prevented. We don't keep those stats. We don't know what those stats are. But I know that this doesn't pencil out. It doesn't pencil out on a spreadsheet. But sheriffs, law enforcement officers, we have to deal with the human toll of our community. So is there a statistic that we can prove that an SRO saved X amount of lives? There's not. I was the only elected official at that funeral, though, and it was heart-wrenching. So, yeah, I know from a spreadsheet standpoint, from a, from a taxing district standpoint, that those things may not pencil out. But I think that if we look at it differently, that this is a growing community. Growth is what is pushing this budget. And we have some school districts that are willing to help us with a payment of salary. And then we get that deputy sheriff during the busiest or peak times of this community. So there's many different ways to look at this, but I don't know how many lives an SRO may have saved. But I know they prevent law enforcement to go to schools, and they handle child abuse cases. And they handle many other cases that, that children are involved in. So, but I know it doesn't pencil out.
Well, while I realize the SRO may not be a spreadsheet, what we tax people in this community is a spreadsheet. Okay? That's the first thing. The second thing is, is that no one said they're against SROs. But I will tell you that I've been called and said, hey, is it okay if we get an SRO? While I'm walking from meeting to meeting. Okay? Now, I don't want to say no to that because I trust the sheriff's office and their judgment. The problem is, is that what happens is we don't have a comprehensive discussion about, okay, we're pulling this SRO off of patrol, so we need to backfill that. So let's do a financial analysis of how that affects the budget. That is the problem I have with it. Not the problem of, I don't dispute the fact that these folks can't make a difference in these schools. But at some point, the reality of the numbers whacks us all in the face. That's the problem with Hayden. That they're now actually dealing with the reality of what the cost of law enforcement truly is. About 30% of their budget. What's it at now? About 15%, right? Okay? Well, the county has been subsidizing this stuff, and it's at the expense of your office. Okay? So we have to be mindful of that. I don't disagree with the human side of it. But we're the ones who have to deal with the money side of it. And, you know, either we, we have to look into the future and say, what does this change affect? Because every year you increase the overhead, you have an obligation for further years. You may have closer to the end. And so that's the problem that we have. You know, we've offered and have put forth some pretty significant increases in overhead to get the deputies to a very competitive wage. We're now faced with the City of Coeur d'Alene looking at between 3% and 6% increase for their law enforcement. Well, that's going to be another expense that we're going to be dealing with. But that's not taken into account with the SROs. But we have to take that into account, and that's why I say we should have more holistic discussions. That when we're going to make personnel changes, no matter, you know, and I don't disagree that it's a good thing to have people in these schools. But we have to pay for this, and we have to go to the community and ask for more money. And we're confined with limitations. I mean, we just got done talking about health insurance, went up about $1 million. A 3% tax increase will get us about 1.8, 1.9 million? So that's more than half the money. What are we supposed to do? I mean, we, this is our problem. So I appreciate what you're saying. But you have to understand the challenges of trying to manage all this money and making it so we don't, you know, blow the budget up and then have to keep going to people to ask for more money. And perhaps maybe the way we should do this is to have a law enforcement, a specific levy, and have that discussion. But coming to the board and saying that there's a human component to this, which I agree there is, doesn't negate our responsibility for managing the money that we're asking taxpayers to pay us to cover these expenses. And we have other departments, too, that have staffing requirements. And they're probably not going to get very much this year, if anything, because of that.
I think that the sheriff's office suggestion that we took two patrol deputies and we put them in SRO positions, so we were, we appreciate the board's effort in bringing us up to where we are with our staffing levels. But it was a more of a place marker, not necessarily an intent to grow government. But that says, hey, you know what, next year, once we get our training cycles in order and what have you, we just don't train these people in a week or two. So that's, I think, was from the sheriff's office. It wasn't an intent to grow government. It's an intent to let the board and the community know, hey, this is a growing community, and we have a lot of mental health in our community. And unfortunately, many of these cities are growing to a large degree, and it overflows into the county.
And you're right. And I don't believe that there is an intent to grow government, but that's the result. And so we have to be mindful of that. And that's why I say we need to, we need to do things a little differently. Just like getting rid of the mid-year changes that we've, or mid-year personnel requests that we've had. I mean, that affects your budget when we say yes to all these other departments. It affects your, because the money is finite. It's limited. And so I'm trying to at least advocate that the board change the way we do things so that we can look at things more holistically and have a discussion with an SRO that says, by the way, that SRO is coming out of patrol right now. That could affect service levels in the community. You know, does that make sense for us to do that? We're going to have to backfill that position, which means we've created another position. And how does that, and then do a financial impact and say, how does that affect the budget for the following year and the year after? We, you know, you have actually become so successful at starting to fill your positions that that big cushion that the board has every year of, you know, salary savings and the extra money that comes back is disappearing. So our margins now are becoming razor-thin, and so we just can't take, we can't make decisions piecemeal without looking at it holistically. And so I understand your situation, but, you know, I'm kind of asking that we look at it a little differently and be mindful of the fact that either we're going to not be able to provide COLAs, we're not going to be able to provide steps, we're not going to be able to provide competitive wages if we keep expanding more people and the tax base can't expand fast enough. Because we all know growth doesn't pay for itself.
I agree. The sheriff has discussions with the legislature regarding a different revenue source other than property tax. And I'm hoping at some point in time that's successful. My recommendation would be just, we're only replacing two that are in a valuable position, and it lets the community and the board know that says, hey, this is, and we'll come back with statistics to support those in the next budget cycle. But my recommendation, it doesn't cost anything to leave them there.
But it doesn't cost anything to take them out, either.
Hold the microphone to you.
It's just got to be closer to the end volume.
That's all. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
So Mark, leave the frozen positions in or take them out?
Pardon?
Pardon?
Leave the frozen positions in or take them out?
Take them out.
Okay. There you go.
All right. So it sounds like we have-
That's been a problem from 20 years ago. It's ongoing.
Okay. It sounds like we have at least two commissioners in agreement to remove the frozen positions from the budget. So we'll go ahead and make that change. Was there anything else in terms of personnel requests that the board wanted to discuss before I move on? Okay. So I don't really have anything specific to cover with B budget. Is there anything the board wanted to discuss with B budget?
Yes, I believe I have some. Lot of that stuff. When we talk about the wheelchairs, the trans-air escape, the crowd control, is that all in? Is that in the B budget?
I believe those are non-capital, so yes, they're in the jails B budget.
Okay. Do we still have any, have we used up all of the interest for one-time purposes?
We're using just about the amount the board wanted to use. So we're using 3.1 for one-time expenses and 2.3 for ongoing.
Okay. So with that, I would just ask that the crowd control, that was cut in half, I think, 33,000 would be added back in as a one-time fund balance purchase.
What's the crowd control?
Well, I'm looking for it. Unfortunately, I have 75 pages in front of me.
So I kind of wanted to have a little bit of a discussion about, you know, ongoing versus one-time expenses and kind of the way that I think about it. Well, not just me, finance in general. They may only purchase crowd control kits, you know, once every few years. But the actual budget that's purchasing them, that budget is there every year. And it doesn't go down. It usually goes up every year.
Correct.
And so the crowd control kits may be purchased once or very rarely. But the money is still going to be in the budget every year. And so that's why when I, when we say, you know, we really don't like to fund that stuff out of fund balance because we know that tax-supported budget will be there every year. So let's pay that with tax and not fund balance. So that's where I'm coming from. It just, I really don't like to pay B budget expenses out of fund balance.
And while I understand that, that just means that they go without the equipment that they need instead of paying for it for one time. Because how, when will you need crowd control? How long does it last? Five, 10 years, 15 years, the life of an officer?
Captain Jeremy Howell, for the record. So the crowd control gear would be used every time the detention response team is deployed inside the jail, which is- Well, it's just how often we use it. And then it would last for 10 years or more.
Yeah. So these are part of the cuts that the sheriff's office voluntarily made because, yes, when we're in a tight budget year, people have to go without. And so we basically told departments, okay, what can you go without for another year? And that was one of the things they voluntarily offered to give up.
Yeah. And I'm curious, if the sheriff's office has volunteered to, you know, take half this year and not get the other half next year, why are you trying to put it back in?
Just because it would help all of the department, not just half the department.
And I will say that adding back, I mean, it depends. I would prefer we don't fund those things with fund balance. But if we add back in ongoing costs, it does take away from money that we have potentially-
Yeah, I'm not interested in adding any ongoing costs.
Yeah, so.
Sheriff?
Robert Norr, Sheriff. As we've seen since January 20th of this year, it appears that, and we've used our jail staff for crowd control in the community. And if the last several months or anything, an indicator of the next three and a half years, then it's likely that we will be using them as there are many protests that have occurred and will likely continue to occur at least until January 20th of 2028.
Just out of curiosity, because I asked that every elected official provide a list from priority of what they want down to the least important. And the sheriff's office offered to cut this in half. And this is in exchange to get a COLA. And now it's coming back. And I'm trying to understand, okay, what is really important? You know, is adding these things back in? And, you know, again, I'm trying to figure out what's important.
COLA is much more important. I thought the conversation shifted to some existing monies through a different revenue source.
What we're doing is we're capitalizing operation expenses, basically. You know, which is a standard accounting trick. I mean, it just is. This is, you know, this is how, this is what some major businesses have gotten into big trouble doing. You know, because they take these expenses and they try to make it work on a spreadsheet. But in the end, they set themselves up for failure down the road. Because these are generally operational expenses. Year in and year out, we have to make these purchases. And, you know, the way I understood our budget process so far this year was the fact that the COLA was the number one issue. And so we're willing to give up on, we're either willing to use a little bit older equipment, because this is replacing equipment, right? This isn't, this isn't in addition, in exchange for the COLA. And I'm very good with that. What I'm not so good with is when we start playing the accounting games to pay for operational expenses. Shuffling things around. I think the COLA is much more important.
If there are other B budget items the board wants to consider adding back, we can for sure talk about that, as well as funding source. I'd prefer the funding source be tax because they're, it's an operational budget. But, you know, once we get to the end, maybe after we hear back from the city of Hayden, if we have some more space in the budget, if the board wants, maybe we can go back and look at adding things back. So it's up to the board.
Can you tell me, I guess I'm, well, hold on, I got one for you. So I understand that we, I did get some ALPR audit information. At this point, I would be in favor of taking out the 24,000. Right now, I know that there's still six months left on the contract, which I understand we're going to be getting updated numbers. But I would feel more comfortable cutting that now and not leaving it in the budget.
May I be heard? So can I assume that your position would be to keep the technology but not store it? Because that would be your position?
Well, I-
Or to cancel the contract?
So not renew the contract after December?
Okay. But what about for the officer safety component to this?
Well, I don't have any information here to help me with the officer safety thing. I haven't, I don't have anything to go off that-
Can we start the budget proceedings again? Because we're going to need a lot more personnel to solve cases that we've solved from this. So let's start, let's go back and start from day one. Because this technology saves investigative time. This technology is an officer safety feature. This technology is widely used by other agencies here in Cooby County.
Sheriff, didn't you send out some numbers?
I did.
Or the undersheriff did?
And I, we, in the short period of time, even not having everybody fully trained on this, but we had 419 inquiries into the system. And we've had 19 successful investigative solves or nexuses to another crime.
Is this stationary or only mobile? Because I think that the numbers have stationary in there as well. And we're not talking about stationary. We can't do anything about the stationary.
I'm talking about ALPR.
Okay. I'm only talking about the mobile systems that we have in our car. Obviously, you're not getting rid of the hardware because that will stay. But it's just the storage of the data for 30 days, right, is what we're storing for right now.
Correct. So I would, I'm asking the board to approve that. That is an officer safety feature. That is an investigative tool. And we have not had any breaches into that system. Every keystroke is monitored and every keystroke is, has an origin point. So it has not compromised anybody's privacy whatsoever.
Look, our deal was that we would give you a year. And you make the case of how it's-
Absolutely.
Positively affected the community from a crime reduction standpoint.
Absolutely.
And I think you should at least be given that year. I don't have a problem putting the money in, but we need to at least have that presentation and go through it and talk about it and make the case to people. Because that's really what was said on multiple occasions.
Agreed.
For that.
So Mark, do you want to keep the $24,000 in for the mobile license plate readers?
No.
All right. So it sounds like we have two commissioners who want to cut the ALPR from the budget. Am I understanding that correctly?
Right now, yes.
Officer safety doesn't matter in terms of-
All right. So I'll make that budget cut. Okay. Was there anything further on B budget that the board wanted to discuss?
Commissioner Duncan?
Not on B, no, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to move to C budget, then. I don't have any particular outstanding items on this. Was there anything the board wanted to discuss on our capital requests?
Yes. On the land from the airport, the number is still good. And if we keep with our common practice, we can lower that to 144,000 to purchase that from the, from that.
So you're saying we can lower that purchase price to 144,000?
Yes.
Which item is this?
This is the land for the SAR.
This is line 23C on the capital summary. And this is search and rescue, purchasing land from the airport to expand the search and rescue footprint at the current facility. So it's requested at 160,000. But Commissioner Duncan, you're saying we can reduce that to 144,000?
Yes.
After talking with the airport?
Yep, after talking with the airport.
Is the rest of the board okay with that?
I mean, it's the airport, so they should be self-sufficient, right? And if they're not self-sufficient and they have to come before the board to ask for money, I think that's going to be a big problem.
So you want to pay 100% even though for parks and waterways and the other purchases? It's been at 90%?
Well, you know, I'm confused because I would prefer to actually have a policy that applies to the entire county. Okay? But, you know, like when we ask for every department head to provide us with a budget in priority, I speak to the airport director and he says, you said, don't produce it that way. You know? And so I'm trying to figure out, are we doing things across the board where it's Team Cootney County? Or are we just going to do things that, you know, or every place is just a little bit different? So.
So are you in favor of keeping it at 160 or cutting it to 144?
If we can make a cut, I'm good with making a cut.
Okay.
Perfect. So I'll make that change, reduce that to 144,000. Was there anything else in capital that the commissioners wanted to talk about?
Yes, I do have a question. And since I have a couple, oh, I have all three captains in the room. Help me out with the garage for SWAT and maintenance. Right now, we keep, we have a SWAT garage at 911. And the request for 56,000 is to move it up to Dakota.
Now, we're going to tag-team this because we have a little part of it, both of us.
Yeah.
So what's been expressed to us is the garage at the 911 centers, just filling up with everything else under the sun. Some of that's from the move from Cootney South to Cootney North. Even more stuff got piled in there as we gave up a couple of buildings on that campus before to maintenance and some other things. And so one of the moves was to move the SWAT vehicle up to where, one, it's more readily accessible. Two, the patrol guys who would be reactive to grab it faster than driving clear down to Julia to try to get it, to take it up to a scene. And then that component then turns into the need for it to be climate-controlled with everything that's contained within the vehicle, as far as like the gases, the-
Yeah. Okay. So right now, is it more centrally located at Julia for all the partners? Because is it mostly KCSO that uses that? Or do we have partners that meet us there?
So the city of Coeur d'Alene has their own piece of armor that is obviously their police station. So moving it up to ours would be more centrally located for our people. And then their people would go grab theirs. And therefore, wherever it's going in the county, it'd be a better option.
Perfect. Is the unit one mesh still in the budget, the 28,000?
What, for the jail, yes, that's still in the budget.
Okay, perfect. And then what about the divider wall?
The divider wall for?
Marine safety.
Marine, I believe that's still in the budget.
Okay.
I have to find exactly what line it's on, but I don't remember it being cut.
All right. From discussions with our facilities director, Jeff Bowler, I think that we're going to be able to get that lower price than 113,000. So I just want to make sure that we either lower that portion. If we keep it the same, that we just understand that we're expecting it to be lower and just keep us apprised of that. So that's what I would.
So are you wanting me to make any changes to the marine wall or the garage for SWAT?
No.
Or the mesh, leave it all as is?
No, it's just, I think the marine wall's too, it's just really high-priced. So I'd rather not spend that kind of money on it. But again, you know, I don't know if you want to, a cut's a cut. So do you want to bring it down to 90,000 or?
So it costs us more money to keep it heated, basically. The larger area.
Standing, you know, I don't, I don't know if there's a way to project or if there's a machine that can go in there and test, you know, if you walled it, how much you're going to get back. I don't know. It's a feeling that we've never been into and never had it walled off.
I think the only other reason that there was a request for a wall had to do with insurance as well.
Right, a railing, though, a $15,000 railing could have done that, but.
Yep. I don't think that we're going to save more than $100,000 worth of heat, at least in the next couple of years. Although with the electric heat over there, that's very possible. But I think for this year, we could probably look at addressing it next year. Unless you see a significant reason to.
I was just considering lowering the amount, not cutting it completely.
That's fine.
That's up to you.
I'm still a little, you know, just, I think that it's a little bit of a mistake to not let the sheriff's office have the opportunity to make their case with the license plate readers.
They absolutely do, actually. They do.
Well, yeah, they'll have the case. It's just the money. It's just the money. So it'll end up becoming a, you know, where does the money come from? But I recognize that, too. And you're right about that. They still have the ability to make the case.
All right. So I don't, doesn't it sound like I'm making any changes to capital at this point, except the change for the land purchase from the airport? Was there anything else on capital requests from the board?
The assessor doors. So I just wanted to get clarification on, are these only outside doors, meaning outside their department and none inside their department? And I think Dyson's here, so.
Hi.
I believe there's only one door that's interior and that's between, it's kind of a secondary exit for the clerk's office. It goes into a storeroom for them. And it's kind of, if you walk into our offices, our main office, and you go all the way to the right, it's that door behind our counter on the end.
So it sounds like maybe an emergency exit. So we wouldn't want to lock that. So it, it sounds like maybe an emergency exit, so we wouldn't want to lock that, would we?
Yeah, currently, i- if you bring up the capital request form, so it's saying, uh, replacing existing keypad. So there is no keypad, that's an exit door because we have no exit, um, on our side for county assistance, and that's just a storage door. So there is no keypad on that door and it's simply an exit door and there's no public access, obviously, to that door too. So I, I don't think there needs to be a keypad on that door or tax dollars spent on that door. I preferably don't think that's worth the money.
Okay. I, I'm just not sure, I, I have no problem saying, okay, it's going to be the replace of the keypads right now and we're not going to do any other doors that we're not replacing. Does that make sense? But I don't know, I wouldn't be able to adjust the budget that way because do we have a quote that we could just...
That would be the assessor's office. Are you able to revise the quote to only be for doors that have keypads and not like that exit door?
Yeah, we could, we could probably go back and get, uh, a re, assume if they just took that piece off because we're not asking them to do a bunch more work, it's just if you left this one off, what would it do? So we could do that.
Can we just address this next year? I mean, is there something that's really pending, like impending, I should say, about this? Or is this just a convenience or is this like a, you know, we got to do this because we're having this problem over and over and over again?
I, I think the initial spark for this was that we did have an incident with, with door access, so we had to take a look at it. Uh, but the reason it was happening this year is, I think there was, IT was doing additional keypad stuff on the third floor and so it made sense, if we're going to do it, let's do it all in one round. I don't know if that's still the case because I know IT came back to you guys with some, some changes. Um, you know, we're making it work right now, there's just, an incident happened this year, so we ended up taking a look at it and it seemed like there was already some changes going on, so we thought, okay, the, the building's going to keypads, great, we'll, you know, we'll go in and do that as well this year.
Are you talking about the main entry into the assessor's office over there?
Yeah, like all the doors along that, that side that face the...
So, so there, there's an area out there where there's a cage, if you would. Are you going to make people sit outside in there?
Uh, no, we don't have any plans to, to utilize that space at the moment.
Now, this is, uh, you know those mechanical keypad things that they, they already have them? They want to upgrade to a proxy card. And I'm, you know, the question is, is it...
I'm looking at, at the idea of the, of the door at the very south end over here, west, east end.
I don't think it, I don't think it has anything to do with keeping people out. I think it just has to do with upgrading what they have and do we want to spend that money? And I would ask if we could just wait another year. I mean, is it that important?
I think it's, I think that's good, wait another year.
All right, so it sounds like two commissioners are in favor of cutting that from the budget.
Um, may I put Jeff Bowler on the spot?
Come on down, Jeff.
So I, I, I fully understand, you know, the whole wait thing, I just want to make sure that we're not overlooking something because again, these are antiquated as far as, they're not even on our system, period. They're standalones. And so I'd rather have them on the system than standalones, but Jeff, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, basically just to explain just so you really understand. So yeah, the, the locks that are on those doors right now are a battery-operated lock. They are very, very old and so, you know, we've been having some problems with them over time and, um, you know, we've fixed a couple of them this year. So, you know, with the idea that we are going to the proxy cards throughout the admin campus, it is an opportunity at this point to do that if we want. The difference between, you know, replacing the ones like up on the third level is those are on the FOB system, which are already an electronic lock system. And so these are a little bit more expensive because we have to run wires to these locations for those doors. And it does give us access to, you know, leave the front desk open, we can control that, we could set that to open at, you know, eight o'clock when they open in the morning, lock that door down at five o'clock, it would automatically unlock and lock, and then the rest of them that they want locked all the time could, could lock and then the staff could have the proxy cards for that. So that's kind of the explanation for that system.
How many doors are there that are where the public is and would need to be secure through a proxy card?
Uh, well, there's one door that you use for public entrance, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then three doors along the hallway that their staff enter.
I'm sorry, there's, there's two. We have, we have one for commercial.
So three, three doors total?
Uh, there's four on that side that have access to the, that you can, down the hallway. Um, two are for public access and then one goes into residential and then one goes all the way down, uh, into map.
Map.
Okay, so two are public access.
Yeah, got it, okay.
So then probably, how do, how do we deal with that now for the public access? Does someone open that door and keep it unlocked while they're in the office?
Yeah, and our, uh, our commercial door is typically properly open so that people can come in, uh, and then there's a keypad for the other two.
So it sounds like we could at least up, upgrade two right now and then if the, and the ones for the public, I'm not so sure, do we want to keep that or, I'm sorry, a proxy card for those?
I mean, it would be nice to have them on the system, but...
It's probably going to cost us more for mobilization and, you know, when we come out to run all the wiring for it, you know, to do it in two phases, but it's certainly possible, we could look at revising that quote and have access unlimited, you know, revise that quote for us.
I, I'd rather not do in two phases. If we're going to do that, um, then let's do all four. If we're not going to do it, then, then let's not. That would be my preference.
And how much do we think four of them will, will cost?
Under 31,000. 31,000 is the quote for five.
Yeah.
But we're just doing four? We wouldn't do the one inside the clerk's office?
Correct. Yeah, we wouldn't do the emergency exit.
My question, why aren't you doing the, the other departments, the treasury, auditor, down, community development has keypads like that too, why are we just focusing on one department, I guess?
Well, that's a good question.
Because they asked and I don't know about the...
Yeah, I'm just curious.
See, I, I think that that's a building issue and not a elected official issue. That we should be looking at it from the building side and what's involved.
That's why I called Jeff up.
Well, then we shouldn't be doing it piecemeal.
All right, so are there still two commissioners who want to go ahead and cut this from the budget for this year?
Well, it sounds like this is a building question and not a elected official question.
I mean, I think it depends on how much, you know, we would want to go into that, you know, that, we were requested for that department to look into this because they knew we were doing the exterior of the campus with all the electronic locks that currently existed. So, you know, to, yeah, we could look at it building-wide, it would, you know, probably go up exponentially, um, you know, with all the different key locks that we have on that building. You know, I think eventually it's probably a, a good place for the county to go, to get there. Um, you know, I think we could phase it over a few years to do a department and then look at doing another department the next year and another department the next year. That's probably a reasonable phased approach to, you know, minimize mobilizations, but, you know, have some different departments that we do over the years. I also think if we are going to consider some changes with any departments with moves of, you know, um, which is going to be a future conversation, if we did any remodels or expansion thing, we could look at doing some, uh, some of that access control at that point as well.
If we're going to treat this as a kind of a building-wide issue for building and grounds to deal with as one, um, project, that's probably a good candidate to be funded, um, in a future year by their five-year plan fund balance and that way they can just handle it as a campus-wide or building-wide, whatever, project instead of it piecemealing out of different elected officials' budgets.
And then the other question would be just, how is that going to affect building and grounds when you have a lot more people with proxy card access? Because you're going to get a lot of requests for, "I lost my card," you know, and, and you're going to have someone pretty much by a computer a good portion of the week type in this stuff away.
And ultimately, this is IT that's running this and, um, I believe the budget that this would be paying for is actually coming out of, um, or for the initial campus is coming out of IT's budget. So Grant was the one who actually got all these quotes and was working on that. We are just kind of co-working on that and facilitating that together. As far as the proxy card question, I think it's actually much easier because it is all computer-based versus, you know, having to actually get the physical FOB and program that at a machine. Once somebody has a card, it's easy to change card access, door access, it's really, um, you know, the, a couple of key swipes on the computer to change that or to change the programming of it. That system is here and I think it's a good way for us to go and so, you know, I think...
It's when they lose the cards, when they forget to bring them into work.
Yeah, when they, when they lose the cards, that's a, that's a challenge. Um, you know, I know you could also have a department card that could be checked out if somebody forgot one for the day. Um, if it's lost, we probably need some policy and procedure for how to handle lost cards and that's something we can work on with IT.
Well, go ahead.
I know for a fact that somebody's going to lose one.
They will. It's happened already.
Yeah, this seems like it's a building issue and we should look at it holistically because it doesn't make sense to have some offices that have public access with proxy cards and others that don't. Either we have the policy of doing it for everyone or nobody.
If you want to look holistically, I suppose, then, then that's fine, we can take it out of the budget right now and we can use five-year if the board decides that the upgrade needs to happen before FY '27.
All right, so I'll go ahead and make that change in the budget. Um, that's A, B, and C budget. Um, I'm thinking I'll probably schedule an extra budget meeting before the 31st because on the 31st, I have to present the budget as balanced to you. At this point, I don't have the information I need in order to do that because I need to know COLA percentage, um, pretty firmly, and then I need to know, you know, tax increase percentage. So, um, I'll go ahead and, I believe the City of Hayden is supposed to have a budget discussion on the 29th. I'll try and schedule a meeting for the 30th with the board, but at the end of the day, just be thinking how you want to proceed if I don't hear back from the City of Hayden. Um, and then just in general, I wanted to, um, you know, briefly discuss with the board. I'm trying to come up with a running list of the tax increases that have been taken by agent, other counties such as Ada and Canyon, and then the two cities in our area that we primarily compete with for, um, you know, deputies or other staff. Um, and so just as a comparison, here's the tax increases. Ada County has taken over the years ranging from 2.9%, um, you know, to 1.8. This is Canyon County, they're in a bit more of a hole than we are. Um, you know, they've had to rely on forgone for probably three years now in order to fund operations. And then, um, Cootney County, obviously, we've done 3, 3, 2, and we don't know yet what the board wants to do for next year. And then Close Falls and Coeur d'Alene both took forgone last year and I know at least Coeur d'Alene is proposing to take forgone next year as well. And so, um, I just wanted you to know, I think Cootney County is in a really good position. We've done, done a good job. Go ahead.
We don't live in Ada County.
I know, but we're the third largest county in the state of Idaho and there is great value in comparing what we see are, um, uh, the other entities near us in size, what they're doing because it helps give us a picture of what's coming down the road. So I'm trying to be proactive and give the board a heads up like, hey, this is what I'm seeing other agencies do. Some of these agencies, we don't want to be like them, so maybe let's learn a little bit from like what they've done that we don't want to do or vice versa. What have they done that has worked well and helped them save taxpayer dollars that maybe we could learn from? So I would say Canyon County has definitely, you know, had to do some things financially that I don't think we would want to do. So let's consider what got them there and maybe not do that. So that's why I think there is value in at least making the board aware of what other agencies are doing. If you have no interest in this data and you just want to make decisions blindly, you have the prerogative to do that, but I would not be doing my job as finance director if I wasn't making you aware of this. So that's why I'm doing this. And so back to what I was saying, um, so that's where we're at just in terms of agencies around us, the other two biggest counties in the state of Idaho. And so I wanted to tell the board, like, we've done a good job so far, keeping up with, um, costs, saving money where we can. And so that's what I see other agencies doing, keeping in mind that I do see our operational costs continuing to go up a lot, um, with the new facilities that we're bringing online, the new facilities that we're purchasing, building, acquiring, um, the new staff that we have to add for those facilities, certain operational expenses that are just skyrocketing like jail medical. And I know you're aware of this, but I'm just trying to give you some context as we're approaching the end of budget season, um, where, what I see happening in other agencies and, um, also how that's affecting what's going on here as well. Does that make sense?
Um, I would just have this question, I don't know if you can do it kind of back of the napkin, but if Hayden comes through with 1.4, just say, um, and we did a 2.5% COLA and a 2.5% tax raise, how far away are we from balancing?
So if they came through with 1.4, we would have to levy, probably almost like right at exactly 2.5% and we'd probably be just about balanced because we would need another 278,000 between 2 and 3%. And 1% is about 600,000. So I mean, we'd be like 2.4, 2.5% tax increase, I think, just back of the napkin, I think that's where we would kind of land, assuming we didn't really make any other budget changes, 2.5% COLA, 2.5% tax increase, and Hayden came through with the 1.4 million.
We'll keep our fingers crossed.
I, I have no, um, I don't know what to do if Hayden does not renew with us. That, that I haven't spent time thinking about that.
It won't be zero. They have a law enforcement levy that they have to use that money for. Yes, they do. So it's just a matter of, um, and the other side to it is that they're going to have to do something. And, uh, the fact is that, you know, as we saw today, law enforcement is extremely expensive. So, uh, that problem exists no matter where you are, at least I should say, challenge.
All right, I didn't really have anything further for the board. That's all I have.
Anything else? Public comment?
Commissioners, this is Bela Kovak.
Uh, I'm sorry, are you...
I'd like to make this a public comment.
Is this for public comment?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you, you can hold on just...
Whether it is and when you acknowledge.
All right, just hold on a second, I'll, I'll call on you. Come on down. Uh, podium.
Can you hear me a little bit better? Hello, my name is Evan Schmidt. Um, I'm here as a paying citizen of Cootney County. Um, during my official capacity throughout the day, I worked for the sheriff's office. I think I've met all three of you periodically throughout the last couple of years. Uh, listening in to the budget deliberations for fiscal year '26 is, I mean, it's been a little concerning. Uh, I know it hasn't been pleasant overall due to most of the revenue being soaked up through the new medical increase. Uh, unfortunately, uh, I actually agree with the fact that we're prioritizing COLAs for our employees. Uh, part of what I do on my own time is represent the members of the sheriff's office, the employees' association. Uh, I get a lot of information from them regarding some of their concerns going forward. Uh, with the increase of the medical, uh, being budgeted off of the employees primarily, even if it's not a, at least a close to a 3% COLA, it's going to mostly equate to a push, uh, is what it's going to, and that's the unfortunate part because I have civilians working for the sheriff's office that have expressed to me they have concerns about putting food on the table for their families. So, uh, unfortunately, we've been in this area the last, I mean, we can say a decade, but it's in a growing community. I mean, Brandon just brought up we're the third largest county in the state. Okay, this growth has been tremendous and I think we're to the point where the workload has exceeded the workforce. Uh, and just with the license plate readers, I mean, that's a, that's a piece of technology we've discussed in the past to mitigate manpower and now it's not funded going forward as of, just today. So I can see the frustration with some of the sheriff's office staff members. Uh, but going forward, I mean, I can speak to a little bit to what I know and I work in the jail, uh, and as a supervisor within that jail, uh, it's been, uh, an extreme pleasure of mine to be able to support and mentor and lead the, the fine deputies that work in that, in that facility. Uh, some of the hard times that I've, I just want to express to you that I have with the last couple of years, last three years, the amount of overtime that have been paid out by the taxpayers has just been tremendous and a majority of it's been from the jail. Uh, and unfortunately, our workforce number hasn't increased. Our vacancies have been the highest efficiency we've had in the county overall has been with the sheriff's office and the jails had a huge amount of them. Uh, so you have that depleting workforce with that workload not going anywhere because it's mandatory. Uh, we're, we're covering liability, uh, to be able to care for these individuals within the facility and it's not going anywhere. And you have that amount of overtime on a crippling amount of workforce. The worst part of my job as a sergeant within the last three years is having to look at these people I supervise and tell them that this mandatory overtime is more important than their time with their families, more important than their, their events with their kids. It's, that's the hardest part that I just wanted to lament to you and express that. Uh, I really do hope you consider, uh, any way possible to help get that COLA up to a 3% to help forward a little bit more for the people that work, uh, that I represent. forward a little bit more for the people that work that I represent. Past that, I just want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in here who would like to come on down?
My name's Andrew Mohawk, I'm the vice president of the local FOP. I've also been a member of the sheriff's office for 10 years now. First, I want to start off by telling you, I would hate to have your job. I know that you guys are faced with a lot of tough decisions and a lot of people with their hands out. I, I can't imagine that stress. On the financial side, I, I deal with another kind of stress in my job as well, but again, the financial stuff, the YouTube, I wouldn't want to deal with it. There have been people in these chairs in the past who have made decisions that affect your job now and make it a whole heck of a lot harder, and I respect that, I understand that. But for the past 10 years, the sheriff's office, I've witnessed two mass exodus. A few years ago, we took a great step forward, and we paused that bleeding, and patrol has gone up to the staffing that we would almost like, we're not there 100%, but we're really close. I'm thrilled. But the, the, the temperature right now amongst patrol and kind of the verbiage that I'm hearing today, this is a recipe for a third exodus. It's going to happen. I'm not going to share what my members have told me financially over the past several months, what they're dealing with, but I'll, I'll tell you myself, as a senior deputy, I'm 9.5% under what Coeur d'Alene is right now, and I understand the county, our budget's a lot different than Coeur d'Alene's, I get that, but at some point, you got to ask yourself, you know, do I want to retire, be able to retire at the age that I can and have to go somewhere else? I don't want to. I love being a county deputy, I work, I love working out in the county. Right now, I drive a boat on patrol, it's an awesome job, but in the end, like I said, I want to be able to retire comfortably, and a lot of the folks that I represent do as well. So I'm just asking you, please, I know this year, a lot of the deliberation is already done, but next year, I know we're kind of putting a lot of things off for next year, but they're not going anywhere, they're gonna be there next year. And by this time next year, we could be looking at a lot of people leaving. So, again, I, I appreciate all the hard work you're putting into this and trying to be financially, fiscally responsible, but please note that a senior deputy on the job is someone that you want there, not a bunch of brand-new trainees, and what we have right now is a lot of new trainees and a new folks. There's nothing wrong with that, you got to get that experience somehow, but we have the senior guys now, let's hold on to them and retain them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Bela, do you want to speak?
Thank you, commissioners. I think I'd like to echo the comments made by Deputy Mohawk. I respect the difficult task of sorting through and prioritizing. I just wanted to make a comment, I was having some latency issues, and so I, I, a little lag time and wasn't able to comment earlier when you were talking about the lock and the locking system for the, the assessor's office. Just to put it in perspective, the, the reason why we made a request this year is because we did have the incident, which is something that Dyson did mention, he alluded to, but in the course of that unfolding, we learned that the IT department had been proceeding with, I guess, some locations upstairs on the third floor with making some changes, and so the timing was right, and it made sense, and they were operating out of an excess budget, they had a surplus in this current fiscal year, so it was not actually a budget impact, and so it was our request and our understanding that we'd be included as part of that, and so my understanding is a revenue-neutral situation where they were, they had surplus excess funds that they were going to utilize. The quote that was given to the assessor's office was given to us through IT. We did request that third, that fifth door, the internal door, which is the exit door for the clerk's office. It's just due to the unique functionality of the way the floor plan of the office is laid out, it's unfortunate that it's designed that way, but if you have an entry point into one other department, then either you have security or you don't have security. And so my understanding is those, those, and it's not a proxy card system we're asking for, there's a difference between a proxy card and electronic access. To my understanding, this is electronic access that we're asking for, and you can control those so that they're, they're a request to exit, so it's not going to prohibit staff of the clerk's office from using that door in the event of an emergency. They can always go through it from their side with their card and, and escape if there's an emergency. So it would not inhibit them, and it would not inhibit the purpose of the emergency access or escape. And finally, as far as the mass exodus that the sheriff's office is talking about for their staff, we have been enduring a situation very similar for the, the timeframe that I've been here. It's just something that all assessor offices are experiencing nationwide, and we are at a critical juncture. The commissioners do have the ability in state law to adopt a levy expressly and especially for the assessor's office, so that we can continue to do the work of our valuations, because everything we do, all of our work impacts all other departments and all other taxing districts. And so we're at a critical juncture right now in staffing and ratios. I know that Commissioner Duncan has asked about ratios and competency and level-three assessors, she asks about that almost at every meeting, and the issue is, we need to strike now so that we can begin that, that process of training and getting people geared up for the, the horizon that we know is coming when our more senior appraisers are going to be retiring.
Bela, you're gonna need to wrap it up, you're a little bit past the time limit.
I said, that's, that's, I'm done.
All right.
I'm done. That was the, that was the last comment I wanted to make, I just wanted to put that out there for the record.
All right. Thank you.
There you go, you have it.
Is there anyone else on the telephone who would like to speak? No? 11:14, meeting adjourned, thank you.